Are you afraid?
A lot of pressure to the whole house. What's that? Yeah, good. I got my green light on. Are we good? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our September 12th Portsmouth Town Council meeting. Before we begin, we do have a full house here almost, so I do have to go through the evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency, please exit one of the two doors to your left. We're out the front door here in the front of the council chambers and we would meet across the street at the school administration building and await further instruction. With that, if we could all stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our men and women serving in harms way, and also in respect for the 21st anniversary of nine eleven. Thank you all. Okay, first item tonight is President's Executive Summary. Before this meeting, we did have an executive session to discuss town administrators review. No votes were taken.
Roll call.
We're gonna go to roll call. Sorry.
Ms. Jafusa? Here. Ms. Abbott? Here. Mr. Hamilton? Here. Mr. Katzman? Yeah. Dr. Ryan? Here. Ms. Aguirre?
Here. Thank you all. That was a, I was ahead of myself. I was preparing myself for the the main event here, which is the the presentation of the Portsmouth Award. This year's recipient is Mr. James Carmen. I am gonna walk over to the podium to read the proclamation and then we have our our gift for you and then a little photo op and I'll allow you to say a few words if you'd like. All right, let me, let me get this part out of the way. The Portsmouth Award presented to James E. Garmin. Whereas the Portsmouth Award recognized certain individuals, business and civic groups of the town of Portsmouth that have consistently demonstrated excellence in professional and community leadership. And whereas Mr. Garmin as a town resident has supported the study of Portsmouth history for over forty years. He was a member of the history department at the Portsmouth Abbey School for thirty nine years. And whereas Mr. Garmin was a member of the steering committee and primary historian for Portsmouth's three hundred and seventy fifth celebration in two thousand and thirteen. Giving a series of ten lectures and in March twenty fourteen was appointed the Portsmouth Town Historian. And whereas Mr. Garmin has been an avid collector of all documents, photographs and other artifacts relating to Portsmouth's history and is the author of six books on Newport County history. And whereas he has an abiding mission to help local residents become more aware of the unique history of the communities of Newport County. That is his passion and the reason why he writes and lectures mostly on local history subjects. Now therefore be resolved that the port that the town council extends its sincere thanks and congratulations on behalf of the citizens of Portsmouth to James E. Garmin. Oh, take it away.
It's not going to be a lecture on Portsmouth history except to find it here. Only one page. Okay, there we go. I'm extremely grateful to all those who participated in making this award. What a wonderful history we have in this town for the past three hundred and eighty four years. I've been reading, researching, talking town history since nineteen seventy five, forty seven years, and I'm not done yet. I want to point out three important choices for info on town history to people. First, our website for the Historical Society Portsmouthhistorical.org. Second, a new website that just was launched about a month ago, the battle over island.org, which is a setting up for the celebration of the battle of Ireland in a few years. And one person in particular, the other historian in the town Gloria Schmidt has done a lot on that and she really deserves credit for that too. And the other thing is kind of something a little weird. It's on Facebook, but it's called Portsmouth Rhode Island Historical Photo Club. And if you go to that site on the on Facebook, you'll see photographs of Portsmouth in the back, back in the old days. I contribute about three to three every week and I've done that since January and I'm not done yet. I have fourteen hundred and thirty three pictures of Portsmouth. Anyway, I really wish to thank a few people. First, and nobody's going to remember him, but Ernest Denemy was very active in Portsmouth history back in the seventies. And he came up to me one day at Fort Butts and said, I really think it's time for you to start writing our town history. And he said, if you don't, there isn't going to be anybody else doing it. Actually, when I started my first book in nineteen seventy six, there hadn't been any Portsmouth history written since nineteen thirty eight. Anyway, I especially want to thank Anne Burns and the Board of the Historical Society. I've been there off and on since nineteen seventy four. And especially I want to thank Rich Taliwski, who videos my lectures every time I give them and post them on Cox Local Access. I get tired of watching it myself sometimes. And also on YouTube, but there are something like twenty four lectures of mine on YouTube. I really looked young on some of those. I don't know. Anyway, I really appreciate everyone who has an interest in Portsmouth history because it's it's a treasure trove. It really is. And I want you all to join the Portsmouth Historical Society. Come to our lectures. Come visit us on Sunday afternoon when we're there. We really appreciate it because we don't have enough members. We have several hundred members, but we need more, especially in our town from our town. So I would appreciate that. And I especially want to say thank everyone involved who gave me this award and I think that you haven't gotten me into retirement yet. We're going to keep doing it. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
In fact, I'd like to mention that actually. So, yes, Mr. Garmin was my first American history teacher when I was in high school. And not only was he able to keep a classroom of very intellectually unmotivated boys in a un-air-conditioned, pretty musty old classroom interested. But what really struck me was the fact that among all the people who taught us, Mr. Garmin was actually interested in the subject itself with not just the facts and the dates. He was doing research on families, unfortunately in Bristol, who were in who were involved in the China trade, I believe the Sools and the Seaburries. And he would, his face would just come alive as he talked about opening up these musty old logbooks and these ledgers and amounts and what they were buying and what they were trading. And I'm looking at this guy thinking, these people are all dead a long time ago. And yet this is really interesting. And I think what I think probably more than the dates, the facts that you taught me, I think the most important thing was be interested in something, find something that grabs your mind and and throw yourself into it. And it always struck me that that was, that was what you did and that's what you do. So thank you.
All right. You don't have to stay, folks.
I think send it all the ones that say.
There's no test later.
Go out and celebrate. All right, moving on. Next, we we have our consent agenda.
Move to approve is presented.
Second, all those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa? Ms. Abbott? Aye. Mr. Hamilton? Aye. Mr. Katzman? Aye. Dr. Ryan? Aye. Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Okay. Next, we'll be sitting as the Board of License Commissioners, just one item tonight, and it's a request to change the public hearing for the transfers. Transfer A Class BV beverage license along with the expansion of service from Raki LTD, DBA CJ's Pub to Schooners LLC DBA Schooners, five sixty eight Park Avenue from October twenty fourth to October eleventh, twenty twenty two.
So moves as long as I can clerk enough time to advertise.
Yes, that's fine.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa? Aye. Ms. Abbott? Aye. Mr. Hamilton? Aye. Mr. Katzman? Aye. Mr. Kelly? Aye. Dr. Ryan? Aye. Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Do adjourners of Board of License Commissioners second it.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa? Aye. Ms. Abbott? Aye. Mr. Hamilton? Aye. Mr. Katzman? Aye. Mr. Kelly? Aye. Dr. Ryan? Aye. Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have minutes, minutes from our August twenty second meeting and executive.
Motion to approve is presented. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa? Aye. Ms. Abbott? Aye. Mr. Hamilton? Aye. Mr. Katzman? Aye. Mr. Kelly? Aye. Dr. Ryan? Aye. Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Onto our town administrators report. Mr. Rayner?
Good morning, Mr. President, Mr. President, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. Just a reminder that tomorrow is the primary election day. Polls will open at seven AM, close at eight PM. Just like everybody to note that Town Hall is a polling site for District Seventy Two. And I have coordinated with the school administration and directed Town Hall employees to utilize the lot at the school administration building tomorrow so we can keep our lot open for visitors. Parking at Town Hall is especially tight this election due to the staging area just outside Town Hall here, which is being utilized by the Department of Transportation for the construction of the crosswalk and sidewalk adjacent to our building on East Main. That project is part of the Rhode Island DOT Highway Safety Improvement Program for intersections and crosswalks, which runs throughout the state through December. The work here at Town Hall is due to finish at the end of this week. With respect to the Glenn Manor House contract, we are nearing completion of our negotiation with Russell Marin for the continuation of operations at Glenn Manor House after Katie and Dawn retire on December thirty first. We hope to bring the proposed contract to the council for approval at one of the next two council meetings. And then with respect to the transfer station, the current contract for the operation of the Headley Street Transfer Station expires June thirtieth of next year. A request for proposals for curbside collection and transportation of residual residential refuse recyclables, yard waste and bulky waste was released on August eighth. Bid proposals are due this Friday, September sixteenth. After we review and analyze the bid proposals, we will present to the council a comparison of costs between continued operations at Edley Street and compare that and contrast that with curbside pickup. Our goal is to present that to you at the next council meeting on September twenty sixth. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Okay. Onto resignations and appointments. First item is for the Melville Park Committee, it's a reappointment of Commissioner Ray Abraham.
Move to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa? Aye. Ms. Abbott? Aye. Mr. Hamilton? Aye. Mr. Katzman? Aye. Mr. Kelly? Aye. Dr. Ryan? Aye. Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Moving on to old business, old business number one. First item is the ratification of the fire contract. Mr. Rayner?
Yes, Mr. President, as the council is aware, your backup includes the red line proposed collective bargaining agreement. It also includes memos from our labor attorney and a financial impact statement. This has been a very lengthy negotiation process and I appreciate the work and assistance of our Pension Investment Advisory Committee, our label Labor Council, our actuary and the Town Council. I'll cover the major highlights of the agreement and Lisa Puley, our HR Director, will cover the financial impact. After which I respectfully request your ratification of this collective bargaining agreement between the town and the International Association of Firefighters Local nineteen forty nine, from period July first, twenty twenty two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. So the major agreements and highlights, first, this is a five-year contract. Vice a three-year contract. In regard to injury or illness in the line of duty, we clarified language concerning physical examinations with respect to non-job related impairments and included a provision for the resolution of medical disputes between town and employee physicians in determining work on light duty status. This proposed agreement provides for the filling of vacancies with certain command staff while the safer grant is in place. Specifically, if manpower falls below ten men per shift. After that grant expires, we agree to ten man shifts from May fifteenth through September fifteenth. Minimum manning will be eight man shifts from September sixteenth to May fourteenth. This agreement also clarifies language with respect to clothing allowance percentages and stipulates when the allowances must be reimbursed to the town if the employee has been dismissed. We also made several clarifications with regard to promotion, promotions for officers, the notice of examinations, required source materials and eligibility requirements for promotion to the officer ranks. We also added language to ensure that an employee is paid for detail work even if the organization for whom the detail has performed was performed, fails to pay. With regard to salary, the first year we negotiated a point five percent increase in in wages and then years two through five, two percent. Longevity has been eliminated, so you'll see that the salary looks skewed because although longevity longevity is eliminated, the current longevity benefits have been included in salary, the first year salary year ranges. And then after that, they're the first union to drop longevity. With respect to the defined pension pension plan, this contract provides that the cost of the plan shall be funded by employees' pre-tax contribution of fourteen point six percent of the employee's annual salary. It further provides that each year the town's actuary will determine if the percentage of the employee salary contribution should be increased or decreased based on additional costs to the plan utilizing three components. The cost of the cola for non-meres employees, the cost for the additional one percent year of credited services, i.e. from one percent to two percent for the service between one July two thousand thirteen and thirty July two thousand sixteen, when in a previous contract that was one percent, it's gone to two percent in this contract, but of course they pay for that. And then third, the cost for the additional incentive bonus, which goes to two thousand dollars to five thousand dollars if they notify us a year in advance that they are retiring. This agreement further provides that the town's actuary shall determine whether the employee's contribution percentage should be increased or decreased by setting the percentage of employee contributions at an amount that she or he determines will ensure that these additional costs of the plan are fully covered by employee contributions. So everything in this contract with respect to changes in a defined benefit plan are funded by the employee, not the employer. At this time, I'll turn it over to Lisa Puley, the HR Director, who will discuss the financial impact.
Good evening, Town Council members. As the town administrator has shared, the fire contract has a proposed overall five-year savings projection of almost one point three million dollars. Additionally, the proposed benefit changes realize an extended cost beyond the five-year contract of four hundred and eight thousand dollars for healthcare coverage. However, this there is an extended savings of over of almost one million dollars for the elimination of the sick leave buyback when the firefighter retires. Those two combined net and it projected extended savings of almost six hundred thousand dollars. Therefore, looking at the five-year, it was one point two seven six three three four as a contract, five-year contract savings.
So, Mr. President, we respectfully request that you ratify this tentatively approved contract between the fire union and the town.
So move, motion to ratify or second.
All those in favor? All right, no. We have a motion in a second.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry Fitzmaurice, fifty Kristen Court. Sorry, I was writing things down. My memory was that there was a state law that required labor contracts for municipal unions to be limited to three years. Did that change? Because this one's five years.
Right. We we worked this through the Labor Council in the state. It's been approved for five years.
So the law changed?
I don't know if the law has changed. I know that the state and the labor unions have agreed to it.
Okay. Can we go over this one percent to two percent increase? I missed some of that. In the air first comments, you were commenting about we increased in the labor agreement in the contract. Was this the calculation of the benefit, the retirement benefit? This is on the pension plan for the retirees, future retirees, based on their salary, increasing, you know, the the combined contribution into the benefit plan for the individual members of the union. Do we go from one percent to two percent? And I'm not sure what you said, so I'm asking.
This refers to, if you read the contract, this refers to the period of time where the escalator, in other words, the amount that they earn towards their total retirement benefit during those years was one percent vice two percent. So you earn a percentage every year up until retirement. What that in effect did is it required them to stay on duty slightly longer than they do now. They wanted to go back from, they wanted to change that one percent period. So they were three percent. They went to one percent. Then we negotiated two percent. We've been two percent since two thousand sixteen or seventeen, I believe. So they changed that from one percent to two percent. However, they're bearing the cost of that. And what is the cost? The cost is it would allow some of the retirees, some of the people in the defined benefit plan to retire a little bit earlier than had they with retire earlier with the full benefit than they would have been able to do with just the one percent. But they're going to fund that. So there's no cost to the town.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzmaurice. Okay, so back, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa? Aye. Ms. Abbott? Aye. Mr. Hamilton? Aye. Mr. Katzman? Aye. Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Aye.
Dr. Ryan? Aye. Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next item is the resolution regarding the installation of the Mayflower Secana River Transmission Cable. Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, Mayflower Wind is looking to put a three hundred and fifty volt cable down the middle of the Secanic River. And before the state energy facility siting board approves that, I would like to make sure that we have a full environmental impact study. I'm also very concerned about the our only gas pipeline that feeds this island in a cross section of this cable being damaged as well. So I just want to make sure that the energy facility siting boards here is directly from this council that we do have these concerns about certain aspects of their installation and potentially future installations of other cables directly from the council and not just through hearsay, Facebook and other avenues.
Right. I mean, this doesn't, sure. I want to thank Keith, but also I'm sure others had a final hand in putting together this text that was different when we last looked at it, right? So I'm very pleased with how it came out. It, as I said at our last meeting on this topic, we are not experts on a lot of these topics. And so we need to engage consultants, be they legal, engineering, what have you. And this resolution reflects that. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Any further comments, questions?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa? Aye. Ms. Abbott? Aye. Mr. Hamilton? Aye. Mr. Katzman? Aye. Mr. Kelly? Aye. Dr. Ryan? Aye. Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to new business, new business number one, it's a appeal a decision by the DPW to deny a curb cut at twenty nine eighty four East Main Road. Mr. Hayes?
Good evening, Council. I'm Neil Hayes. I'm the general contractor for the the job at twenty nine eighty four East Main Road. But before I discuss the curb cut, I wanted to discuss, I wanted to introduce Amanda.
It's easier. Hi, I'm Amanda LaRose and I am the owner of Rhode Island Oak Counseling and Wellness. My family and I moved here two months ago to the state of Port, the town of Portsmouth from the state of Virginia, where I have an established counseling and wellness business. And prior to moving, I did market research and found that there is a great need in Portsmouth and the greater area for counseling services, especially counseling that will accept insurance. And so we are doing that and hope to do it here in the town of Portsmouth. Also adding wellness services as well. So, you know, I'm sure you've heard that there are months waiting lists for people to get this support and there's a crisis in our nation and I'm just really trying to help prevent that crisis from happening here and to support the community.
Thank you, Amanda. So that's what's happening inside the building at twenty nine eighty four when we're finished. And what I'm at the council for tonight is let me give you an idea of a little bit of the history. From what I've heard from people in town, that that used to be Kaufman's Hardware back in the day. And it was, the lot was much bigger and then the town redid Patriots Drive to accommodate the traffic from the high school and they've reduced the size of the lot. And we've been working on that project for a few years now. And when we first got it, it was overgrown and it was falling in on itself and we gutted it and rebuilt it. And then the pandemic hit and there was really nothing we could do. So we've just been hanging on. And then and then Amanda came along and now we've sped up progress and we're doing everything we can and and we we designed a septic for it that's not hideous. You know what I mean? Like normally the septic's or it's like a square, square box and it's pretty horrible looking and especially in that location because, you know, everybody's coming out of Dunkin', Dunkin' in the morning or going into the high school. And so we, so the septic took up a little more room than we we could have used. I could have made it smaller, but I just figured, you know, aesthetics matter. So that was one of the considerations. And then the other consideration we have on the lot is on the, when you, when you pull into Patriot Drive from East Main Road and when you pull out, like in the afternoon in the high school, when they pull out, we have a couple of parking spots that could be right there at that intersection. And and if I keep them there, it's going to, it's going to restrict the kids coming out. My, I had four children go to Portsmouth High School. And I very clearly remember how they drive. And I'm not insulting the kids. It's just that's what happens when you're young. You know, you're sixteen or seventeen and and you want to get out of the high school parking lot quick. And I just don't want to. And, uh, I just don't want to impede that, so what I've asked for is a, a curb cut at the top of the, at the top of the lot on the Patriot Drive side, so that I could make that parking lot one way up, and then you could exit, everybody would exit onto Patriot Drive, and, um, that way we're not backing out into East Main Road, and that way we're getting into the, into, into the intersection with everybody else. And, uh, part of that is, I, I'm, I'm going to try to, because I'm not going to use those bottom spots so that everybody can see coming out of Patriot Drive, I, I'd like to be able to pave over some of the town property there, you know? Some of the town, they have grass there that I've been cutting for the last few years. And I'd like to pave over some of that, just to, you know, compensate for the parking that I'm losing at the bottom, I mean, I could, I could keep the parking at the bottom and not pave over the town property, but you know, it's about safety for me with the kids coming in, it's a six to one, half a dozen to another, and I'd rather, you know, pave over the, the town section that they, that was originally part of the lot, but that's really up to you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. So, your, your application was denied?
Yes.
Um, by, by the DPW Director. Uh, so you're here tonight to, to see about if the council will, uh, will uphold the, the decision or overturn the decision? Mr. Woodhead, with, with respect to the denial, is it, is it about safety?
Counsel President, it is mostly about, it is hundred percent about safety. And the proposal, if you see the proposal that's coming up, it's, it's going on the Patriots Drive. The biggest thing when we look for in a road cut permit is that there's a few considerations, there's public welfare, traffic hazards, dangers to the pedestrians, and then public in general. So, the proposed permit has a driveway going, like Mr. Hayes says, going up the side of his, his property on the north side, going all the way up and then exit onto Patriots Drive. One of the considera- the, the consideration I took into account, and this is the highest, is the pedestrian safety of the kids coming down. With that large amount of pedestrian traffic going up, up that, up to the school, and then having that section of sidewalk being bound by both sides with vehicles either coming down or cars coming out of the parking lot, you trap that sidewalk with, with vehicle traffic, so it's not very safety, it's not very safe for the kids to be walking down that sidewalk. So, that's why I denied the permit.
Thank you, Mr. Woodhead. Um, are there questions from counselors?
I don't have questions, I do have comments.
Comments? Comments?
Um, well, first I'd say I'd love to see something nice happening in that building, because it, it's been, it's been a while. Um, and, Mr. Woodhead, I value your opinion very highly. But I think I disagree on this one. To me, I look at this intersection, and there's a lot of traffic coming out of the Dunkin' Donuts parking area already, coming from that direction, stuff coming out of Patriots Drive and having, you know, rerouting their curb cut so that they go through Patriots Drive, I think makes sense to me a lot in terms of a traffic safety, and those kids are walking down Patriots Drive down to East Main Road anyway, and walking along East Main Road, and I think managing, you know, left-hand turners onto East Main Road to me is a more of a safety concern than, than the pedestrians going down that one sidewalk.
And if I could add, add to that. It's in the same vein, so that way I get my question in, you can. So, we, we received your the letter of denial, which recited the criteria by which a application is reviewed. But until, you know, four minutes ago, we didn't know why it was denied. And, um, we didn't have the plans for the curb cut and, and all this information until just a few hours before tonight, so, it sort of fundamentally, I'm a little don't like making snap decisions, decisions on questions that will impact a, a developer, like, you know, someone's trying to get a business off the ground. That said, I agree with Councilmember Abbott. It, it's not a clear this is safe, this is not. It, I, I think that there are risks to increasing traffic at that location by having a business be open, whether they're entering or exiting directly from East Main Road, turning whatever they way they're going to turn, which is right adjacent to Patriots Drive, turning whichever way they're going to turn, and there's no stoplight at Patriots Drive, even though there should be. So, with all that said, I think people coming and going from that business onto Patriots Drive, as busy as that road is, uh, is still a less busy road than East Main Road. So, that, that's my, off the top of my head, the view of it. Uh, so I'm inclined to lean in favor of the petitioner, but I'm also inclined to perhaps, um, depending on how I feel, moving to table to give me time to absorb everything that's going to be said tonight, but I'm not making decisions on the information just presented.
I, I actually have a, a few comments, um, actually, Mr. Hayes, could you come back up? And, and obviously, I understand the situation. You know, uh, I'd love to see a new business go in, um, and I think what we're all talking about is having a new business go in and, and have it be safe. Um, for, for not only the, you know, the, the owner of the facility, but also for the pedestrians. And so, in looking at your plan, it is a little vague, um, I don't see a parking plan or a parking layout, at least in the information that I have. It's just a, it's kind of a, a, a rough site plan. So, some of the things that I, I have questions about are, you know, you mentioned you want to pave stuff, so you're going to be increasing the impervious area?
I, I think with the septic, uh, being grass, because that's, you know, the septics being grass, I don't, I think it's, I had the engineer over there this weekend, and he's like, oof, it's kind of, you know, what we're losing here, we're gaining here.
It is, well.
That was his opinion, he didn't do a study on it.
Right, so, I mean, if, if you had a parking plan that showed, you know, how, how your parking space is really about safety, right? Do you have enough room to get in and out, make turns?
I, I mean, i- if you give me no curb cut, people are going to be backing out into East Main Road. That's what's going to happen.
That's not a safe parking plan, so.
I mean, that's, that's reality, that's, that's what's going to happen.
Well, I, I, I understand, so, I guess here's my, here's my concern. You know, you, you, you said you wanted to expand and pave, right? You want to, you want to increase the impervious area to, to put this driveway out the back, right? That was a grassed area before?
Yes, yes, it's grass with a stump on it.
So, from, from my perspective, it, there's no zoning issues here? Um, Mr. Gavin? Is there any zoning issue with lot coverage or anything of that?
I hadn't looked into it, but I, this is a, would be a grandfather business establishment, a commercial.
Right, it's a business that, but if it's a non-conforming use, right, or if it was a legal, legal lot, right, legal lot of record size, what I mean? What's that?
It is conforming use.
It's conforming, so it's commercial, so there's not a, not a zoning issue with lot coverage or anything of that nature. We don't think.
Well, there's no need to, uh, apply for any permit in the zoning board, because it's, uh, you know, it's grandfathered commercial use.
Right, but I, I might, I guess my point was is if he's, if they're expanding the lot coverage that would exceed what's allowed for commercial use, that's all, that was my only question. I was on the zoning board, so these are the kind of things that run through my head if it was special use, so I think about lot coverage. I, that is a flat area, so I, I worry about additional runoff, I think the only catch basin is to the north of Patriots Drive. Is that, is that right?
There, there's a catch basin in the middle of the lot.
Right, but once it gets to, it gets to East Main Road.
I, it is, it's not a, um, flat lot, that's a, that's.
Oh, no, I, I know, I saw it.
It's, it's in the middle of a hill, so, I mean, we get, we get all the runoff from above constantly, like, in the, the basement in that thing, I had to put in, um, three pumps of drains all around the inside, yeah, we get a lot of water from above.
Okay. So, I'm just more concerned about the, the, the safety aspect that everybody's been talking about and making sure that it's a safe area, you have adequate parking, and, but I can't see that on a plan. That, that's, I mean, to Mr. Katzman's point, do you have a parking plan? Did you submit a parking plan? No.
I didn't know I was required, I, 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 he to- he told me to do that, this is my first time applying for curb cut, and I, and I tried to get as much information as I could from him, what he required and, yeah, how, how to do that, because I, I do not dig.
Nope, understood, and, and so we're just, we're all trying to work to a safe resolution, and I think to, to Mr. Woodhead's point about safety, you've got, you've got a driveway right to the, to the west, and then you've got a neighborhood driveway to, so you've got three driveways and a very, if yours is approved, you have three curb cuts within.
I, I understand that, but that, you're talking about a neighborhood with two houses on it.
Um, I know.
Okay, I'm just, I mean, that's not, that's not like Spring Hill Road or something like that, you know what I mean?
I understand, but I, I think about site distance and things of that nature, which your engineer should be able to advise you on. Right, you said you had an engineer for your, for your lot?
Yeah.
I guess what we're trying to say is, is can you demonstrate that, that you've, that, that it's a safe intersection, that there's adequate site distance, because that's what Mr. Woodhead is kind of implying here is that, that, that there are safety issues with, with pedestrians and traffic.
I, I heard his concern with safety with pedestrians and the kids coming out of the high school, I, I understand that. But I don't think there's any site issue there, there's, there's not a tree in sight, there's plenty of visibility, both directions up and down the hill. Um, to me, it's, to me, the safety issue is for the patrons of the business and, and, and the rest of the community, you know, if I can leave those two cars parked at the bottom of that lot and, which I am completely allowed to do, it's already existing parking, I can easily do that. That's dangerous, that's way more dangerous than anything else we can do here tonight. And, and I'm trying to, my resolution to that is, I can, I can bring my cars into the parking lot and exit at the top, everybody comes in one way and out the other way, there's no coming back out onto East Main Road, no backing out onto East Main Road, no taking up visibility from the kids coming out of the high school. That, that's my issue, and that's completely unto you, what, what you want to do with it, I mean, I, I don't have any studies to prove it, or how many parking spots, I don't have any of that.
So, so how many, you don't know how many parking spots she needs for the building?
She's going to get everyone I could possibly get her. And not one more.
Okay. But I.
I mean, she, she's.
Look to the plan, and what he's at, what kind of a lot he has, you're looking at maybe five parking spaces, six.
Right, right, so I.
I don't see six, I see, I'm, I'm looking at ten easy.
Wow. And again, I think, I think that's where maybe, maybe there's a, a concern here about what's the, the actual number of parking spaces you would need for the business to operate safely. So, if, if, if you could do the calculations and it says you need seven parking spaces and you're trying to generate ten parking spaces, well then, you might be unintentionally creating a problem by trying to add more parking. That's, that's all I'm getting at. Right now, we don't know, or I don't know. That's all. So, I, it's hard for me to say what's safer, not safe, if we don't have a plan, at least just my opinion. If we don't have a plan that shows that you can do this safely, and I think if you could demonstrate that, then it's much easier for us to to make an informed decision, otherwise we're, we are speculating a little bit as to what your intentions are. That's all.
My, my intentions, um, up to this point in my life is to make Portsmouth nicer, that's been my goal. And I'm not, you know, that's what I've been trying to do, every house I've ever touched, every business I've ever done, that building in the building was falling in on itself, I don't know what the answer is here, I, if you're looking for, like, study, I don't have it, I, I did exactly what he told me to do. I told him ahead of time, he said, give me the plan, I got him a plan. I, I'm just trying to make things easy for everybody involved, if, and, and, you know, I don't know what else I can do, I really don't.
I understand, I, and I, I'm only one council member here, I was just asking a question about if you had a parking plan, um, that would help me make a decision.
I do not.
Okay.
Mr. President, if I may, I did, there's my concern is not with the business that is being considered tonight, which is a low-impact business. My concern be in the future, if we put a curb cut in there. I also have a sixteen, well, had a sixteen-year-old son and was a sixteen-year-old driver at one point. I have a greater concern of a curb cut there of kids going the wrong way through that curb cut and avoiding the intersection. Saying, I'm going to beat, I'm going to beat you.
I'm going to beat the bus.
Or beat the bus. And I'm going to cut through that parking lot. That's a greater concern to me than pedestrian traffic. The nature of this current application in business is low-impact. It's going to be maybe classes of five or six people doing yoga, one or two people coming in for counseling, it's not Dunkin' Donuts where we're going to have a line around the corner. I'm less concerned about that, and, and there's two main times of the day when there's major pedestrian tra- traffic. I walked it today at five o'clock and I was the only pedestrian. So, it's going to be two fifteen when the kids come running down the hill and seven ten when they're running up the hill, so they're not late. I, I don't see a big issue with this current business having this curb cut, my concern is future businesses. Not that I'm suggesting that Amanda's going to fail, I hope she survives and she's there forever. But my concern would be future businesses and, and a higher-impact business being grandfathered in with extra spaces and a more transient business where it's in and out. Well, well. I have to say, that goes to President Aguirre's point of a specific site plan for how many spaces and where and, and more than we have in front of us tonight.
I, I vehemently disagree. I think, um, a, a parking plan would be great, that would be wonderful, but I think, like, we're kind of losing uh, sight of the big picture, I think there's a couple key points here that we should focus on is one, there was a building that was decrepit in our town for a long time on a main road that we really want a good, successful business in, because that's good for everybody in our town. Two, we can't design for every teenage boy that's going to behave like an idiot, and, I mean, there's five hundred other places in town that they could drive through parking lot, so.
And do.
We can't design that. And three, regardless of whatever business you want to put in there, we, I, I don't think we want people driving out of that parking lot and taking a left on East Main Road when we have Dunkin' Donuts and a whole plaza doing the same thing on the other side. That is just a terrible idea, we have that kind of interference with our left-hand turning lane on East Main Road everywhere, and it's terrible. Um, so, anything that reconfigures this parking lot to get people to not be going in and out onto East Main Road is positive. And I'm not saying that seeing a parking plan wouldn't be great, it'd be great, but I think it, it's kind of besides the point really, at the end of the day. Um, so, you know, I think meet whatever requirements you need to get approval, but getting fewer cars trying to turn left on East Main Road is positive for everybody in this town.
Getting the curb cut is just going to change where they enter East Main Road.
Yeah, but they're.
Come off of Patriots.
Patriots Drive is there already anyway. So, people are always, we need the road, we don't need people coming out of this parking lot onto East Main Road. We don't need both, so let's consolidate them.
So, there's a second parking lot, it looks like, to the east and south of the building that I presume belongs to the neighboring building.
It's, yeah, it's, it's west and south, but yes, it belongs to looking upwards.
Right, um, and I'm, I see a grassy area that's between uh, the building and Patriots Drive and also to its west, I presume that's the townland that you're mowing the lawn, and so, you want to be turning some of that into parking spaces. Is there any possibility you could tie in the exit of your parking lot uh, into the drive to the other parking lots, that you had a shared drive?
I haven't, um, broached that subject, it's very hard to get in touch with looking upwards, the, the management, that's.
Really?
It's been, it's been an issue for a while.
Because that would, you know, again, the, that egress onto Patriots Drive is already there, it looks like, uh, the grand total of ten feet of paving to connect your parking lot to that, uh, to that drive, I know, you know, there's lots of places in town where multiple businesses empty onto the same access road, so this, it might be a possibility where we wouldn't have to, uh, you'd still get the Patriots Drive egress, but you wouldn't have to do any the, the sidewalk would be largely un- un- unaffected by it.
Like Mr. Hayes was saying, though, it's town property and that is not part of that road cut permit, so, that would have to be a separate permit that comes into my office. I still don't have a permit for that, that if he wants to take over town property and increase volume of, of his parking, that still has to come in front of my office, I have, I have a drainage rusher in that grass well going up there. So, it's going to have to be some drainage calculations to be filled. I'll figure it in on this.
So, that, I saw the structure, that structure's on town property?
It's town property.
It's all been dug up?
That, that's where it is right now, it's a separate issue, but we know.
So, are we sure where the property line is?
It's on the, it's on the plans where you've shown.
This, this is, looks like it was approximate, I don't know if this was actual survey or not.
We have an, we have an eighty foot right away on that, uh, Patriots Drive.
Okay.
Well, I, I appreciate it.
Eighty feet to the south?
Okay, what's that?
Eighty feet to the south or eighty feet total of the width of Patriots?
Eighty feet total, center, centerline. Eighty feet total, center line, center line of road, forty feet on both sides.
Mr. Woodhead, could you explain what's happening right now on the town property?
Well, on the town property right now has been excavated and we asked Mr. Hayes to stop until till it's brought back to original, because that is our property with no permits. He's excavating on top property, not any permits.
Mr. Hayes is is digging on town property without proper permits. Is that what you're saying? Mr. Hayes, could you respond to that?
Uh, yeah. I I I I contacted him about the curb cut, asked him what I needed for permits, because no one I know has ever had a had ever had to get a curb cut permit or has ever had to get an excavation permit, so I didn't know that I needed an excavation permit. And I thought that was my property, and I will gladly restore that to to town to uh to to I'll leave the stump there and I'll make sure that there's dirt back and grass. If that's that's what you 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 have, that's fine. I have no problem with that.
Okay, I I'm a little puzzled. I believe Mr. Woodhead would have had a conversation with you about that prior to.
I mean.
Okay.
No, well, he 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 contacted me after it was excavated.
So, right.
I I didn't realize it was town property. We have done no work since then.
He hasn't done any more.
Okay, okay.
So it was an honest mistake?
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't, I'm clearly not trying to hide anything on that location.
I I'm inclined to agree with the Ms. Abbott that the curb cut there is not gonna be an issue, again, because of the the amount of foot traffic is not huge. It's more more kids are driving to schools there than they are walking, that's for sure. And I agree that having multiple outlets, I think even looking upwards comes in on East Main Road and goes up to that back parking lot and comes back out on Patriots.
It looks like.
So putting in the curb cut, again, for this particular business doesn't concern me. It's any future applications that could be a concern, but I would be in favor of although I word this motion, allowing for the curb cut provided that Mr. Hayes works with Mr. Woodhead to design the area in concert with the existing infrastructure of the town property that's currently there.
Agreed.
Yeah, I'd support that. Thank you for making the motion.
So we're, just to clarify, we are if Mr. Woodhead cannot reach an agreement, then.
Yeah, I don't think that's a huge stumbling block.
Yeah.
In terms of cleaning up the area, I think Mr. Woodhead and and Mr. Hayes are both intelligent men and they can figure that out. But you know, the the big concern is that making sure it's done properly, safely.
Okay.
To 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 make sure it's safe, as safe as possible for everybody.
Well, if Brian, if Mr. Woodhead believes that that's a reasonable way forward, I would I would support that.
If if that's what the council wants, then I mean, I'm I'm at the will of the council, so if that's what the council wants, gonna work with Mr. Hayes, I will, but I just wanted to say that, in my opinion, I don't think that was necessary, that location.
Mr. Roberts.
Peter Roberts, Eddie Armored Avenue. What I want to point out, as you're talking about the kids walking on there and the amount of them, but yet not once has Sprague Street been mentioned. Where kids come down Educational Lane, turn turn toward East Main Road and walk down the street in the street, because there is no sidewalk. And when they come up the other side, they're walking in the street. And as Ms. Abbott mentioned, it's not just the boys. I've seen the girls out there doing crazy stuff too, okay? And I mean, moving sideways and people slamming on their brakes. So as long as you're gonna address this and the safety of it, let's tell the state to straighten that road up, and it's never been done. You haven't done it enough. You've got to get serious about it. These kids are walking in the street.
Agreed, understood.
Thank you.
Okay, alright. I was thinking it was about this petition. Yes. Chief Peters.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council.
I do want to add. We gotta, we gotta ramp you up volume.
We can hear you just really quiet.
Maybe you gotta shout at the microphone.
Any better?
Yes, there we go.
Better? Alright, thank you. I do want to say, I I do agree with Director Woodhead. I do have concerns with adding a curb cut. The reason being is anytime you add a egress from anywhere, you do increase the risks of pedestrians and motorists. I've not seen the plan on the agenda tonight. I didn't see if that was included, so I don't know if that came late in the day. I do agree with what was said earlier, I believe it was by Dr. Ryan, that the best way, in the police department's opinion, would be is if you could combine that with the other driveway, so we're not adding an extra driveway. And this way, we still use the existing egress and we're not adding a second one. By adding a second one, a lot of times in that close vicinity, it causes confusion amongst motorists, because you have people exiting one driveway and then you have the other driveway so close in that area. That creates confusion with the motorists. Combine that, I think we also have to include the transportation with the buses. You're gonna have several buses. That's the main way out of that area. I think if this was included, that the school department should be included to see their opinion of the situation going down there. I do support the business coming in. I think it's a a great thing to improve this, but I just have concerns. I prefer to see a plan. If the council does move forward on having this plan in place, I think we have to codify how the egress is gonna be, so a future business can't or this business later on can't change it where you can have people exiting and entering from both of the curb cuts, because I think that would be a problem. So if the council does choose to approve this particular curb cut, I think we need to codify the entrance and the exit, so this way the police can take action if someone makes an illegal entry or an illegal exit at that location.
I have a question. How, what mechanism do we have to codify entrance?
I'm gonna add.
Direction of.
I'm just gonna add the chief's comments to my motion and say we'll have the exit entrance on East Main Road and the exit.
On Patriots.
On Patriots. It's, and I understand the intent and and I think I think you see that down at Clements Market where you have the write-in only. But how many times do you see people taking a left into there? So it's it's really hard to and it's really hard to enforce.
It is.
It's it's very hard to enforce. But again, I I think I do I do support the business. My my only concern is just I I would just like to see a plan. That's that's just me understanding, you know, how many parking spaces could you put in there? How many do you need from a business perspective? And if it can't be done safely, and do you have enough room for this access drive with the parking? That's all I'm getting at. You know, that's from your, you you have an engineer on board. He's done all this work. I don't know why he didn't provide you a parking plan, but that's, you know, that would have helped you. It would have helped you at least from my perspective, but I'm just one vote. So, you know, I was hoping for a compromise.
What's the motion on the floor?
I think it's the motion is to allow for the curb cut provided that Mr. Hayes works with Mr. Woodhead to do it safely and and repair the work that's been done to town land and entrance on East Main Road, exit on Patriots Lane, Patriots Way. But here here's my main concern, is if we do, if we were to table this, I'm sure Amanda wants to get her business going. I don't know when. She would have to wait another week until we got this information.
I second the motion.
I know it was a word for word, but I was just trying to reiterate what my motion was.
Right, I I just hear so much concern about the lack of plans, and it always makes me nervous to not follow the safety concerns of our DPW chief and our police chief. So I would I would vote against your motion, and I understand that there is a, you know, a need to speed up for this business. However, I don't know that why we need to have a situation where we can't wait to get a more definite plan, because that's what I'm also hearing from.
Because I I the reason I I disagree with you is because the the what's on our plate as the town council is to appeal the decision. As long as we're agreeing with appealing the decision, I think Mr. Woodhead is I trust him to work it out with Mr. Hayes to a a solution that is favorable for our town.
I agree with that. That's why.
Yeah, I mean, I could throw in, you know, working with the police chief as well, if you wanted to do that in the motion, but I I'm sure Mr. Woodhead talks to chiefly every day.
Chief Peters.
Peters. I'm sorry, Brian.
Chief. Back a little way.
I thought it twice.
As long, I mean, I I just don't want it to be forced decision that we have to have this curb cut no matter what, and that you do have the option of deciding there just isn't a safe way to do it. Your motion isn't implying that they must have a curb cut, is it?
Yes. It's to allow the curb cut, to overturn Mr. Woodhead's decision to allow the curb cut, but they do still have to work together to make it done as safely as possible.
Feel like if there's, if he's going to work with them and get more details and the.
It doesn't need to come back to us.
No, but he's just been told, he's just been told he has to have a curb cut no matter what, and I don't like that.
If the council does move towards that direction, then I'll work with Mr. Hayes. Mr. Hayes will just have to, you'll have to send another plan to the Department of Public Works showing all the curving and all like that. I mean, this as wishful thinking that it's gonna happen within a week. I don't think it's gonna happen within a week that opening. Because by the time you have to order all the concrete curbing and then you have to cut the roadway, then you have to put concrete in behind the curbing, it's a process. It's not gonna happen like that. I just want everyone to know. And by the time I get plans from his engineer or whoever that shows all the R I D O T specifications, it's gonna be specific a little bit.
Mr. President, sorry.
Yeah. The what? Town plan? Oh. Ms. Hitchens.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. We can see you.
Sorry, I'm I'm joining this late in the conversation, but I also haven't seen a parking plan myself, so I'm a little concerned. I since my my planning staff works and as part of the zoning enforcement, it would be helpful if we could participate in the conversation and help Mr. Hayes determine how many parking spaces he needs, instead of just guessing if he needs ten or twelve or eight. So I I would like to like to help and decide like if he's over his lot coverage. He may have to go to the zoning board. I'm just not sure.
Thank you for.
Thank you, Leah.
Thank you for volunteering to help guide this through. Appreciate it.
I I mean, this, again, I I my concern is is just making sure that we have safe intersections and and I do support the business and I want to see it a successful business. And I just do not want any unintended consequences. It sounds like there's a couple of issues with still working on town land that you've approached upon town land. You know, so it'd be nice to see a plan where you're where you're able to do everything on your lot with your parking and your access. That's just fundamental for me. And, you know, if 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 this is all we have to go by tonight, and and then I'll make my decision based on what I have before me tonight.
Mr. President, again, I'm now not only concerned that our DPW chief and our police chief, but also now our planner is saying that we need more details before we make a decision, and I don't see why this cannot be delayed a couple of weeks to see if that can be worked out without having this motion that seems to require the curb cut to happen. So I I would vote against the motion and simply request that our staff work with the parties involved to to come up with the reach a consensus about what needs to happen going forward.
That can be done within the motion. If if Mr. Woodhead, Chief Peters and Leah look at it and say, this can't work with the engineered plan you have, you got to bring it back to the council and then bring it back.
Okay, if that's your motion, but I thought you said, okay.
It is. It's to, basically, it's to overturn his decision to deny the curb cut. I'm adding the other pieces into it to try and make it safer, but I I trust our DPW director, our police chief and and our town planner to work in conjunction to make all those decisions.
Right.
And Mr. Hayes and unfortunately Amanda have to understand that those are the steps they're gonna have to go through.
Right, I think we agree. I just want to understand procedurally what's going to happen, so they will.
We'd add to that, just to the procedural point, that if something were to reach some sort of impasse where there's a an untenable situation that one of Chief Peters, Director Woodhead or Planner. Thank you. Would bring this back for the council, let us know, and we would take appropriate action at that time.
Can I also just add that I think it it seems like maybe this coming to us was maybe a little premature. It would have probably been, you know, served everyone better if plans and, you know, parking plan and whatnot had been reviewed and discussed before the request was denied. And, you know, so that all that information was was available before the request for the curb cut was denied. So now I think I am, yeah, definitely in favor of reversing the the appeal. Let's take another look at it, see if we can come up with a a reasonable solution for everybody.
And and you can still start your business. I mean, you can, there's nothing stopping you other than your parking lot being torn up at the moment. You can still operate your business. You still have an access in and out of the business. I think what we have to figure out is, is is there a safe, is it, is, can it be done safely on, you know, without encroaching onto the town land? If you need to encroach upon the town land, okay. That's a separate, that's a separate issue. Do you have enough room? And and that, I think that's all we're trying to say is, is can this be done safely? Yes or no? If it can, then by all means we'll we'll go that route, but I I don't think we have enough information to make that decision tonight. That's all. The only problem with all of that is it's a lot less expensive and a lot easier for Mr. Hayes to bring in somebody to pave his parking lot once. But I I I think if we, and and I can, we can try and tailor this motion anywhere we can, I'll run it through the solicitor, but I I think there's gotta be a way that we can allow our towns. I mean, if it is just as simple as the council votes to overturn the curb cut decision and directs Mr. Woodhead to work with the parties to find a suitable way to make the curb cut, fine, but it's just I I disagree with Mr. Hayes. I don't think he's gonna get ten parking spaces in there based on the size of the footprint of the the thing, but parking plan and all that good stuff can be all done in conjunction with this motion. If it comes, if this Mr. Woodhead says, I'm at an impasse, I'm gonna go back to the council, then bring it back to the council.
Right, and I I think that the implication here is that somehow Mr. Woodhead made some kind of definitive decision. And it ended in the sense that the Mr. Neal had to come to us to get over this decision. I feel like, in fact, they could have still been working on this, but they just wanted to rush it, frankly. And I don't want there to be an implied scenario being drawn here that Brian just made this boom decision that that was in some ways unreasonable. I feel like they should have been able to keep, continue working, and it was premature to bring it to the town council.
I don't think anyone's implying anything. I I do think that his, the request was denied and he's appealing it.
Well.
It's 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 the process.
Yeah, that's our project.
Right.
The denial letter itself.
From the date that the decision was made by the director of TPW, they have ten days to come up with a council.
Okay, okay, but it is now, right, but it is now in a position where we don't need to overturn it so that the motion is is going to force the curb cut to happen no matter what. Is that right?
But we need the motion in order to allow them to continue talking, otherwise.
That's fine.
That denial stays.
That's fine. Okay, understood. That's better. I'm open to that. So.
So I'll tack on the town planner at the end of that with a parking plan.
Two pages out?
So, so just to recap.
So, so just to recap, the applicant needs to provide an adequate parking plan for review, showing the access, showing the number of parking spaces, um, for Mr. Woodhead's review and if, if acceptable approval.
An, an engineered plan, not being, right, drawing, yes.
Consulting with Mr. Woodhead, with Chief Peters, with, uh, our town planner.
So that way, if, if there's hiccups in the process, it's up to, it's up to the applicant to try to resolve those issues with our, with our, with the appropriate staff between planning TPW. And, and I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion. A little convoluted.
And a second, which is pretty safe.
Can we just hear it back just so we're all?
Yeah.
All right, but, but we all understand the, the premise. Mr. Woodhead, you understand the premise? All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, you understand, as long as we can come up with a plan. Um, and then we can try to, you know, move forward and, and everybody will be happy with it. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions? All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Idia?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Amanda, best of luck. Welcome to town. We hope, we wish you the best of luck and, and it is truly a service that is needed in town. Thank you.
Let's share the outside.
Okay, let's, um, this one's an important, ratification of appointment of the finance director. Mr. Rayner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Honorable counsel, in accordance with the applicable articles of the town charter, I submit my request for your ratification of the appointment of Mr. Ryan Kilpatrick of Charleston, Rhode Island as our finance director. I do so without reservation after having participated in a rigorous search, process and extensive background investigation. The former finance director, Ms. Lisa Lasky, notified the town in May of 2022 of her intention to resign and accept a new position at Roger Williams. With the announcement of her resignation, human resources began the search and selection process for a new finance director. Advertisements were placed with the International City and County Management Association, Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns, uh, the Government Finance Officers Association, indeed.com, LinkedIn.com and the websites for Portsmouth and the State of Rhode Island. We received over 70 applications. Each candidate was screened for conformity to minimum qualifications. Four candidates received second interviews. One candidate received the enthusiastic endorsements from both the school department finance director and our municipal finance consultant. After a thorough vetting process, I am bringing, bringing forward Mr. Kilpatrick as my choice for finance director. Ryan is an exceptional candidate. He is an accountant with extensive government finance and contracting experience, is a certified professional contract manager, is an experienced supervisor and graduated magna cum laude with honors accounting from the University of Rhode Island. He has successfully served as lead specialist in government contracts at General Electric Aviation and developed financial standard operating procedures while as supervisor of shipbuilding in Baton, Connecticut. While working for the government, he also performed audits with the Naval Sea Systems Command. He is adept in financial management analysis, budgeting, contract management, financial reporting, uh, and strategic planning. He's a diligent, goal-oriented professional with the agility, educational, professional experience and moral integrity to lead our finance department. So I respectfully ask for your concurrence.
Motion to, what is it? Ratify, concur?
Approve.
Second.
Questions, comments?
No, I, we need somebody there full time and hopefully Ryan will be a, a long time town employee.
Hey. He has such a lovely name. Agreed.
All the, all those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Idia?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Welcome aboard, Ms. Patrick. Uh, looking forward to it. I did mention that this was an important one. Um, all of our decisions, like all these agenda items are important, but from a selfishly speaking standpoint, um, the finance director filling this void, uh, it's been four, you know, four months or so, um, where we've had to, you know, make do with, and we've had extraordinary help. Um, but it's, it, it means more when you have your own person in there and, and, uh, so we're definitely looking forward to having you onboard. Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to number three, uh, which is a request, uh, the opera funding in the amount of $13,608.23 to purchase a Lucas chest compression system for the Prudence Island volunteer fire department. Chief Ford, how, you could have come with us on Saturday, you know?
I could have.
This would have been, you know, a little talking point.
There's, there's just a little problem with that. You see, yesterday, now everybody knows what day yesterday was, right? Yesterday was my 39th anniversary. And so my wife and I, uh, the day came for us first. And I spent many, many years going to memorial services on my anniversary, but a while back, we stopped that and we are away for our anniversary every year.
All right.
So I, I was, it was very tempting.
I know.
She could have come to Putin's.
He wants to get to Putin's.
Is there any shopping on Prudence Island whatsoever?
It's a general store. A big cruise and then an island destination.
Trying to swing that by here.
Walk in the park, go to the T-War.
Hey, Chief, you want me to save you some time? Sure. Motion. A motion?
Second.
That was easy.
Questions, comments?
It's, it's a great piece of equipment for, um, that even laypeople can use.
And, and I will say, just because I practiced, this, this piece of equipment, there's a, a protocol down on an island. We are actually supposed to do CPR for 30 minutes on scene. Studies have shown that good BLS care in those cardiac situations has a, a better outcome than scoop and run. Uh, so we're, we're required to be there doing CPR. This device gives consistent, appropriate CPR. And if you've ever done CPR, it's a very tiring thing and you have that human factor and becoming involved in fatigue, uh, especially on the island. So to have a Lucas device there performing those chest compressions is, is certainly a warranted, uh, item.
I, I think they, they'd be happy to hear this news and I, that's what I was getting at for Saturday. Um, this is something that, uh, that I think, um, will mean a lot to the, to the residents out there because again, they, they are on an island and, um, sometimes they have to wait for, for the additional support.
They always have to wait for the additional.
The guys over there respond very quickly, but.
But, but ultimately.
I know. Ultimately, there's, there is a delay when you, when you do live on an island, so.
They, they got rid of human compressions in Rhode Island, I believe, 30 years ago because they aren't delivered consistently. Machine, all it has to be do is to be positioned properly and you know exactly how much compression is being delivered with each blow of the vest. So they, um, we, it's not, it's malpractice to do it well.
Right, quiet.
Both of our.
Drink that from the record?
Our frontline ambulances here on the mainland, we, we have them in both. It's very common, piece of equipment utilized.
Thank you, Chief. So we have a motion and a second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Idia?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Chief.
I'm assuming this is, you'll take side of the contingency portion of the opera funds that were remaining.
Correct. If you look at the backup, uh, there's, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars that's left over. A hundred and six thousand, we'll take that out of that.
Okay, next we have correspondence.
Move to receive and place on file.
Second. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Idia?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Uh, next we have future meetings, uh, September 26th, October 11th, which is the Tuesday, uh, October 24th.
Which is the day before my birthday.
That's just, so we'll have cake. We'll have cake. We'll put that on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'm making a motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Idia?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Good night.